Call for order of the March 1st meeting of the spoken meeting for the Minuteman Regional High School. Pardon my voice, my voice. Do we have any public comments? It is being recorded by David Jerris. Any public comments? No public comments, we move on. Chair's report. I have the brief report. Assuming you've been paying attention, you probably know that pending state approval, which is expected in a week or two, we will soon have a new regional agreement. My current understanding is that according to state legal opinion, no provision of the new agreement will take effect until July 2017 with the exception of Section 90, where the towns have agreed that withdrawing members should not be obligated for any debt incurred by the district after December 10th, 2015. Now, that's a legal opinion we got from the state. Came a little bit as a surprise for me that not going to go into effect until then, but we follow what the state says. That actually makes some things we're going to do easier over the next year. We also expect, of course, starting July 2017, to have a revised district membership and a smaller school committee. Obviously, this has implications for the future of the school and the school committee, so please keep that falling in mind. First, until July 2017, all communities still have an obligation to the school that includes appropriate participation on the school committee. Next, we still need a quorum to operate, and the quorum is still based on 16. Next, keep in mind that some motions still require 11 affirmative votes for passage, which means that there's going to have to be some discussion on some of those issues. So although some motions still require 11 affirmative votes for passage, yet many of the membered towns no longer have an ownership stake in the long-term future of the school. That's the reality. To meet this challenge, as in others resulting from these changes, the officers will meet shortly, and will develop a series of proposals to help us navigate these and other issues that will be brought to our attention as we move forward. We will be discussing these issues as a school committee extensively in the near future. Meanwhile, the primary focus of the school committee over the next few months must remain with the building project, even though we have another, other issues to deal with. That's really all my, my only comments, based on what's going ahead. We still have to run the school committee, and there are going to be some specific challenges we're not going to face, and we will do so. We're not the first group that's ever faced this situation before. Okay, that's all I have for comments. Um, I don't see any real reason to bring up any communication issues. So I'd like to hear the principal's report. Mr. Dillon.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon. In front of you, you have the 2016-17 school calendar. The only thing that this calendar is still missing is the MCAS testing dates. I checked the DESI website today. We're still delayed in putting those dates out. My suggestion, however, however, is that you would approve this calendar tonight, and as soon as those dates come in, I'll put it into the calendar with that information to Liz, and she can question that to you at that time.
So you'd like the motion to approve the calendar as your...
Correct.
Does somebody like to run second?
Second.
Okay, so my question is, is it unusual for... I mean, this is ridiculous from a school schedule, when you do not have that information already.
Yeah, we continuously check the DESI website, and even they've acknowledged that they've had some delays in getting this information out to schools.
That's a follow-up. Any discussion?
Should we not wait until we get down to date?
The principal would like to take the vote now. We're going to have to take props, possibly a revision later. We could delay, or we could vote it now.
Would the MCAS dates really affect the calendar?
It's not going to affect the calendar. We're still obviously going to take the MCAS exams. Our students are going to be great, but I wouldn't wait.
Yes.
So I was looking at the calendar, and there doesn't seem to be... I looked, I compared it with this year's calendar. There doesn't seem to be any conflict with what they did this year, as far as half-days or any of those things that I... So I see no need of that.
No further discussion. Bring to the vote, all in favor of the motion on the table. Thirteen in favor, opposed, and abstentions. One abstention. Thank you very much. Field trip.
Seeking approval for a field trip, which is going to take place at the Best Western World Plaza Hotel in Marlboro, Mass., and at Blackstone Valley Regional High School. It's the Mastermind Skills USA State Leadership and Skills Conference. We'll be leaving here at 3:30 on April 28th, which is a Thursday, returning on Sunday, April 30th at 4:00 p.m. We have approximately 60 to 70 students and five to seven staff members.
Could I have the motion, please? Mr. Dillon.
Second.
Discussion. Mary Ellen.
Could you please let us know who these chaperones are?
I can't let you know, but off the top of my head, I believe it's going to be Mr. Regan, Ms. Quay. Those are two out of the five, I can think of three names.
And who pays for them?
The district pays for the chaperones, and if any students have any financial hardship, so...
Do we know if any student has ever applied for any scholarship?
I'm not working on that.
Alice.
I think it's exciting.
They're very exciting. Have them come forward to it.
Seeing no further discussion, bring to the matter to vote, all in favor of the motion on the table. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Is that going to be your report?
It is.
Thank you very much. Your attendance report.
Thank you. Amy, could you come up? In your packet, there's some information about Amy Caro, my recommendation for the director of special ed. I believe at your table is also a review of the process that we undertook in doing this search for the special ed director. Amy took over as an interim on October 13th, and in January, we posted the job formally internally and on school spring. There were 10 candidates that had applied. We interviewed two. The interview committee was made up of parents, I believe there were three parents, two school committee members, Judy Taylor and Sharon Antia, and about 11 staff, special ed teachers, guidance counselors, and another administrator. We conducted interviews on Wednesday, February 3rd. We had 38 questions that were submitted, and we narrowed it down to, I think, 12 or 15. And we asked every member of the committee to fill out a feedback form, and Amy was clearly the most highly recommended candidate. So I'd like to introduce Amy to you, and you want to say hello? Anyone want to ask Amy any questions? That would be lovely. Go ahead.
Hi. I had a question on the letter, the second paragraph of the letter that you sent to Dr. Boquillen. You mentioned that you were able to move the department into compliance according to both state and federal regulations. Was it out of compliance before? I'm relatively new on the committee, so I'm just looking for background on this.
So there's requirements in terms of timelines on how many days you have to complete evaluations? And when I was hired, the evaluations had been completed, but the meetings had not been scheduled to bring those meetings to completion. And that was my number one sort of role as the special ed supervisor when I started with the district, and that's something that I accomplished.
Additional questions? David.
Hi.
Hello.
My question is, you've been there five months, six months?
I've been with the district for two years. I've been in the school for a few months.
What do you see are the primary abilities that you have in your group, and what are the things you're going to have to work on?
Referring to students, or referring to the staff, or...
Oh.
We have, in my opinion, we have a great staff. We have very diverse staff with different qualifications and strengths, and I think that it's a very well-balanced special ed department. I think that moving forward, it's just how those strengths play off of one another to get our students, help our students move forward. So more opportunities for professional development and for collaboration. And I think our students are very, we have a very varied student population. We have 300 special education students with varying disabilities, specific learning disabilities, medical health disabilities, health disabilities, on a fifty-spectrum disability, and they are all part of a full-inclusion program here at Minuteman in accessing the curriculum with their peers, and that's what we want. We want to serve our students in the least restrictive environment possible, and I think that our staff are able to support their students regardless of the challenges they have to access the curriculum. We're able to provide different supports to get them the supports they need to access them.
So there's something that has to be improved or changed?
I think just building on the strengths that we have in supporting our students.
This is sort of an extension, I suppose, from, from the question David asked, and maybe a slightly different aspect. What would you perceive as the differences in designing and conducting special education programming in a vocational school such as Minuteman versus a traditional academic high school?
I think having our teachers be familiar with the curriculums within the different vocations so that we can also support them there as well, and that's obviously not typical. There's benchmarks and criteria that students need to access in the vocational shops that are new to special education teachers, and if we have new special education teachers, they may not be familiar with those frameworks. So it's providing professional development and time for teachers to collaborate, to do that forward. It's easy to modify or make accommodations in the general education classroom. I think that's, people go to school to learn that, but how that translates into a carpentry shop or into DBC takes some collaboration. Thank you.
Mary Ellen.
I have a quick question. You went to San Diego State University, and is that, are you a doctorate? Did you complete your doctorate?
I did.
Okay, because it doesn't count that, but you're, you're entitled, yeah. And also, just a little background, do you have special education background, educational background?
My educational background is in social work. I'm a licensed independent clinical social worker. That's what my master's is. I moved, I started in residential and special ed schools, then moved into public schools, creating programs and supports so that students with emotional or behavioral struggles could access the curriculum along with their peers. Moved from that into special education administration, got my doctorate in leadership so that I could help move those cases forward and provide support in that area. So it kind of all comes full circle at Minuteman, where we have high special ed meetings, and we have high mental health needs, and so I directly supervise our school's social workers and our school adjustment counselors. I'm able to give them that supervision, which is nice.
So under the law, aren't you required to take so many credits in education? Eighteen, is it eighteen credits in education?
My doctorate is completely in education, and I have my special ed administrative license with the state of Massachusetts as well.
Okay.
Alice.
I'm assuming you're excited to start working here, and I wanted to know... Sorry, human error. I'm assuming you're excited to start working here, and I'd like to know a little bit about what you really look forward to doing at Minuteman and why Minuteman.
I'm excited to continue working at Minuteman. I've been excited to be here, and this, this new role just gives me a little bit more opportunity to continue the work that I've started. I love the students. I love the staff. I love learning about vocation, which was new to me. I think that it just provides the greatest entry point to serve and to help kids get excited about learning. It's not your typical high school, and that's what makes it great, and that's why our students come here. So they, they come with a passion that you don't always see, and I think that I'm in a position to help lots of our staff further that excitement and that passion in those students. Thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Please.
If there's another question. I was on the committee, as I said, that interviewed the two hundred candidates, and so my comment is that not just was I impressed, but parents from Carlisle were highly impressed. And it was clear to me that parents and staff, faculty, all believed that she brought the strength of leadership and, and commitment to long-term continuity at Minuteman that they were seeking, and it was very important to them that she embodied that and promised that.
David, and then Jack.
I want to thank you very much for the background and so forth, myself independently, and I see you're very well-qualified through your presence, this is impressive. I just wanted you to know that I am going to abstain voting. It's nothing about your record of yourself, it's just that you're getting a three-year contract, and they kind of forget that committing my town, we may not be here, or probably won't be here as part of this district, but I'm going to commit to education. Mark.
Jack, twice.
This is not really a question for Amy, it's really a question for Ed. I believe it was last meeting, could have been an earlier meeting. We had a public comment at the start of the meeting about wanting to make sure, I don't remember the exact entity, but basically the special ed advisory committee was, yeah, was asking to be included in the process of interviewing, selecting, and choosing, and just wanted to make sure that they in fact were actively involved in this process.
Is everyone here from the CPAC?
Yeah, I think one of the officers of the CPAC is...
Susan Roney and I are in good communications and good contact now. We started the CPAC web server so we can try to communicate with parents better as they sign up for that through the Minuteman website. We've got some dates on the calendar. I'm going to attend two different sessions that they have for question and answer, and then for new parents of incoming freshmen for next year. She has laid out her plan for what she wanted to do, which was four meetings in a year with specific topics, and there's two of those each year that she would like my participation in and other special ed staff to be present, and so we committed to doing those. The other two are more business-related that they don't want me there or don't have my need there. And then we're going to work. It, it may stay with four meetings, it may grow to that. We're going to talk about speakers, and maybe combining our CPAC meeting with other district CPACs for, both for resources and for being able to share and support each other in that work. So it's slow, it's small right now, but, but we're working together. I think the CPAC's really important, and I think it's important to give our parents a place to discuss concerns with each other and support each other, and then to bring those concerns to me and whatever will I claim that in supporting them. I'm, I'm excited to do that.
Mary Ellen.
So in the past, the CPAC has been a member of NASCAP, and that has been a while, and I would really love to see that come back. Is there any way that you could fundraise? Is there any way that the school committee could contribute something? I just think it's very important. When you talk about education, because they have excellent speakers, how do we follow up on that? I'm serious, but I think that it's very important.
I believe that follow-up and that your presumably new special education director would have to approve that approach and to pursue it, and that's something that's important for her, she's the one who's going to be the primary resource.
I understand, I just think it's important for the school committee to know about decisions.
Before we move any further in this, I would like actually somebody to make the motion, and I'd like them to actually read the motion under item 5A. This is what you'd like to do. Move it.
Consistent with this, I move, consistent with the school committee by Article 3, Section 4, to approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Amy Caro as special education director under a two-year contract and annual salary of $125,000. Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion in the motion that's now at the table? No further discussion, all in favor of the motion on the table. Hands up, please. Thirteen in favor, opposed, none abstentions, and two abstentions. It is moved and welcomed, and thank you, and we look forward, we look forward to seeing you, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Special town meetings?
Well, I think as Jeff said, the special town meetings are completed, and the results are known. Before we move on to the other thing, I didn't want to mention, I believe I sent you a notification that Minuteman received a $500,000 grant last week from the governor specifically for equipment to beef up our metal fabrication and initiate an advanced manufacturing program. There were 65 applicants, the governor awarded 34, I believe, for a total of $9.3 million. The largest award possible was $500,000. Thanks to the good work of Michelle Roach and others, and Steve Sherrick, we were able to achieve the maximum for that period. I have a second step by Drew.
Mr. Drew?
Yep.
Uncomfortable. I had a request by a few school committee members to move item 5C later in the agenda, and I'd be happy if there's no objection to move item 5C to after item 8. So if there's no objection, I'd be happy to do that. Are you objecting?
I'm not objecting.
Very good, go ahead.
We should extend and write in line with what we have here.
Okay, then somebody then, let's do this formally. Does somebody like to move the move item 5C to after item 8?
Does sports matter?
No. The reason is that, that when you have, as we mentioned earlier, there are several long-term items that commit us to things that are beyond the pale of the members who are currently sitting there present, and some of them feel uncomfortable voting on those items. They don't want to vote yes for something that is, may have a tiny percentage of impacting their communities negatively, but they don't want to appear to be trying to stop the committee from moving forward in a reasonable manner. So they prefer not to be present when a vote on some of these matters is going to take place. Now, there's some matters as they, there will be some items coming up in which it's going to be required for them to vote, because it's going to require more people than we're going to have membered towns when we're done with this. But for this particular item, I see no objection, since this requires just the majority of a quorum. I see no objection not to put the item towards the end. They can leave if they want to a little bit early. That's my understanding of the movement, as far as I'm concerned, we can vote now. Outfits.
Thank you, Jeff. I would like to see it discussed now, and the reason is that I'm one of those six, I represent one of those six towns that will be, that has voted to withdraw. There are concerns which I have discussed at some length with Ford and Dan Matthews about voting the debt before the new agreement is approved by DESI. And there are a number of selectmen in front of withdrawing towns who are here and who are anticipating that we would discuss it in order. And I don't want to get too far into it, but I think that's a good reason to discuss it. It was not my intention to leave and let the rest of you discuss this. I think that it's an appropriate item for me to vote on, as well as any of the representatives of the other withdrawing towns. So that's why I would like to see us do it in the regular order.
Well, then, I'm going to not make the motion if there's not that many people who are interested in, because I'm indifferent. So unless there's a great groundswell of people who want to move it, it'll open up the discussion of 5C right now. Jack, once.
Before we do that, Jeff, we just voted, 16 towns just voted amendments to the regional agreement for the first time in 49 years. Don't we spend any time talking about 5B as a group? I would certainly be interested, although we don't have to take any action, in particular, hearing a little bit about for those towns who voted not only for the agreement but to withdraw, what the reasons, the rationales, the logic was for the withdrawal, and, and what the fallback alternative plan was. It's not necessarily action that we have to take, but it's a, it's a watershed moment in our district, and it would be interesting to know something about what the dynamics were at those town meetings.
Well, my comment, Jack, is that first is not an agenda item on that.
True. It's a discussion about the counties.
Yeah, okay, right. And the chair did make some comments before you arrived regarding the things we're going to have to untangle over the next few months, and of course, we'll discuss them at that point, but I guess if there is, allow a little bit of discussion, there's no vote, motion on the table, so theoretically, there's no reason to discuss, but I wouldn't mind opening it up for a few minutes if you wanted to hear a few comments, but just for a few minutes. If there are people who are interested.
If there are people who would like to say something, I would like to hear it.
Yeah. Do you have a specific question you'd like to ask?
No, again, just interested in, in what the thought process was for the debate and the discussion, and in particular, what the alternative or the plan, it's a fallback to provide vocational education for the students of those communities.
All right. I'll take a stab, and I'll keep it brief. Bloxboro is situated equidistant from Chova, Assabek, and Minuteman, and we, we talked about the opportunity we had to give our students the ability to choose freely among the three schools. So we had a confluence of favorable circumstances that I think caused people to vote for this. One is our geographic location, two is the fact that our enrollment is about five students, and so we can really handle the transportation issues and let them go wherever they want. And three was this opportunity with the amendment. So I would characterize it as the chance to give our students free choice, and I would also say that the fact that this, the school, the new school, will not open before September 2020, whereas the other schools have recently completed renovations, also play a part.
Item 5C, Mr. Superintendent.
At your place is a handout under 5C with the language for the vote under 16D. I should give you a little background. This was reviewed by the MSBA, and approved. It was reviewed by bond council, by the district's council. You'll notice that in order to...
And I would also say that the fact that this, the school, the new school, will not open before September 2020, whereas the other schools have recently completed renovations, also play a part.
Item 5C, Mr. Superintendent.
At your place is a handout under 5C with the language for the vote, under 16D. I should give you a little background, this was reviewed by the MSBA, and approved, it was reviewed by bond council, by the district's council. You'll notice that in order to have the sixty days fall within all the ten remaining towns' town meetings, regularly scheduled annual town meetings, the last sentence of the first vote identifies a date of May 2nd, 2016, which is sixty-one days or so from now. There are a few town meetings after that date that are exiting the district. We've had multiple conversations with the Department of Legal regarding the approval process, they're waiting for the certified votes. Because of some individual town bylaws which put time constraints on the ability of the town clerk to certify vote, for instance, in Needham, that date is twenty days after the vote. Other towns are seven or eight days. So Needham will not be able to provide us a certified vote from the town clerk until March 7th. We anticipate that we will receive all those, and we've received most of them. We will bring those into the Department of Ed, Chris Lynch, and Jeff Wilson will prepare that for the commissioner's review, and as has been said many times in many different ways, the commissioner will approve them. However, it will not be until they receive all the certified votes, and they expect to make this process very quickly for us. I put at your table as well communications from going back to December in regards to the process of approval by the commissioner, and there are multiple assurances there that the commissioner will act quickly. We've kept them informed of all the changes along the way, there's nothing new, nothing has changed. So I believe the district is ready to make this vote. This is a simple majority vote, we have a couple of legal opinions here describing that fact from bond council, as well as Murphy Hess, who we think.
So first, before we get going, I'm asking for somebody to actually make the motions, and there are two vote, two motions here, but if you can move them together, if you'd like to do that. As written, Ms. Alice Blutner.
I would, yes.
I don't think you have to repeat who referred a document that says as written, and you just could title it.
I move that we vote to bond the building project under MGL Chapter 71, 16, Section 16D as presented. The document's title is distributed at the table, course, will be made in three months, 16, Superintendent's Report Discussion on Building Project and Possible Vote, MGL Chapter 71, Section 16D. And it is the vote language.
Covering both the vote and for the vote, is that correct?
Yes, both the vote and for the vote. Second.
Moved and seconded, open it to discussion. We'll start with Jack Weiss.
Jeff, I'm going to make some comments later, but just a point of information, I guess, well, let me ask you a question. I believe at the municipal representative's breakfast, there was an implicit understanding that we would try to hold this vote so that that sixty-day clock would work within the regular schedule of town meetings. Notwithstanding the last sentence of that first full paragraph, and Mr. Manley's opinion, if we take this vote tonight, ten of the sixteen communities in the district will not have met within that sixty-day window.
Is that true?
No, they will have all, there's only, we have that list.
Ten of the sixteen meet from May 2nd after, and if we take the vote tonight.
No, after May 2nd, how many do you got on May 2nd?
No, I'm saying if we take the vote tonight, ten of our sixteen communities will not have met by that sixty-day window.
Okay, so let's clarify this, because that's different from my understanding. So is it true that this will not, because my understanding, the reason that I'm willing to move forward to a vote, is that all, my understanding is that all ten of the towns would have at least spent their first day by May 2nd?
Yeah, that's according to the town websites and the schedule for annual town meeting. There are only three communities that will not have met as of May 2nd.
But the issue here is that May 2nd is more than sixty days from March 1st. And we had a legal opinion offered at that municipal representative's breakfast, notwithstanding Mr. Manley's opinion, that this state, that the district cannot, the district can put whatever date it wants in this motion, but a vote to overturn it has to be within that sixty days regardless. So we have duly.
Hold on one second now, because I understand your point, and I'd like to hear, because you're saying that we're basically off by a day or two. So I'd like to hear, because theoretically the superintendent has looked into this, I'd like to hear the superintendent's response, because that's a question I have as well. Okay?
Yeah, we spoke to Mr. Manley, who indicated that by the language in this vote, by putting the date of May 2nd in there, we were in compliance. He said, send that to the MSBA with that date in there to make sure. MSBA said yes, and they told us, make sure you talk to bond council. And we had assurances from both the Department of Ed and from bond council that this language and the date of May 2nd, even though it's one more day, is appropriate. We did that expressly for the purposes of allowing the towns to all have had their annual town meeting.
So my concern is that we've had two sets of attorneys who represent Minuteman say opposite things. And this is an area, and so I'm suggesting that it is not, it is not beyond the realm of possibility that there will be a legal challenge to the bond issuance debt if we go forward on this. If some communities voice an objection on May 2nd, I'm not predicting or anticipating or trying to, I'm just saying if that happens, I think there will be some people who will potentially raise a legal challenge that says, sorry, great that you took that vote on May 2nd, it wasn't within the sixty-day window. And I will explain why this is a particular area of sensitivity for my community. The bond authorization vote to approve the feasibility study funds was conditioned on a number of things, including that the size of the new school would be decided before any feasibility study money was set. And as a result, Belmont, because of that language, did not vote, did not call a special meeting to oppose that motion. Turns out, as we battled with lawyers in discussions, we did not take legal action, people said, sorry, you didn't, you didn't vote against it within the sixty-day window. You had your right. And so I am very concerned that despite the language here, if we don't follow state law, somebody's going to say tough luck Charlie to every town who voted May 2nd if one of them should vote against this.
Further discussion of that, Ford.
Yeah, I am, I'm very concerned about a couple of things, and I think for the most part, I agree with Jack. Belmont, it's my understanding, and Jack, you can tell me how it worked, but as I always recall, your Minuteman discussions were near the end of your town meeting process, which sort of took you into, well into May, so that's into June. So I don't know if, in other words, would your town take this up at the beginning of their town meeting process on May 2nd? And have you talked to them, and have they agreed?
Can't be called a specific discussion, but I think if we had to take a vote within a sixty-day window, and that had to be addressed on May 2nd, that would not be a problem.
That answers that question. The other question I have is, is May 2nd, there are a bunch of towns here for May 2nd, what happens if we have a storm, or we have something, and we can't hold a meeting on May 2nd, and they push it out for May, I'm going to pick a date, I don't know, is it the 10th or 9th, or something like that? Then I just, I think that's a real problem. We're also saying to the towns of, of May 9th, first of all, it's my assumption based on what they've told us before, that they're probably going to pass on it, and they're not going to vote on it at all, and they're just going to, it's basically says they agree. That was my understanding, I could be wrong, but I think we at least owe them the right to let them go through their town meetings. So can we, instead of going to May 2nd, can we go to June 2nd, for example?
And if we, the further we push this out, the shorter the span of time we have to go to a district-wide vote. And, and the fact that the further we push this out, remember, we are working with those contingencies, the value of our project may further decline. So I think that we have to be very careful, because our window is already closed by a month or so, and now every day we go closes it more. So going out another month, or even another two weeks, if you think you got a two-month window, let's say you got a two-month window from May 2nd to the end of June, if you go out by two weeks, then another 25% of your window is gone.
I just, if I can respond, then I'll be quiet.
Seems so.
I'm looking at, we have what I call ten towns that are willing, they're the ones that are committed to stay in the district and move forward. I think it's very important that those ten towns agree. We need to work on consensus for this group, and I think we now can work on consensus. And I think if it's very important to me, that we strive to do that and make every effort. And if we have to push it out two weeks, three weeks, so be it. I want those ten towns to say yes for the building, and I think to do anything to antagonize them doesn't help. So that's my, Carrie.
My question arose, not just now, but it's relevant right now. This letter dated January 27th from MSBA says pursuant to MSBA regulations, the district has 120 days of the MSBA board's votes to acquire and certify local approval of stuff. That doesn't bring you to June 30th. Does that negate, and does that negate the June 30th deadline that we had heard about previously, that has been etched into our brains?
No, it doesn't negate that deadline.
So we would still, you're sure, be able to, if something has gone south, whether it's May 1st, or May 2nd, or May 9th, we would still have until June 30th to try an election?
Yes.
Why does that not engage, why does that date on the third date not engage?
If you look at the MSBA regulations, I forget what it's entitled, but there is a process to follow if your local vote fails.
That is true. There's all part of the, there's an alternative there.
I'm not familiar with the alternative, but I know what has happened in other towns is that they would seek to petition MSBA for an extension of some kind. Our extension ends June 30th, barring any unusual circumstances. If we're beyond May 23rd, we're going to have to petition MSBA for some consideration of some kind.
Vince.
Thank you, Jeff. I think both Jack and Ford touched on very real issues. There are, as I, by my comment, it's nine towns that are meeting on May 2nd or after, and six of them are towns that have elected to the May. But the calendar is not the only issue with respect to allowing their annual town meetings to come within the sixty-day period. The other issue is, under what regional agreement is this school committee voting the debt? And if we vote that debt prior to approval of the new agreement by DESI, it will certainly be, at least arguable, if not conclusive, that the debt was authorized under the existing agreement, in which case the exemption that the six withdrawing towns got for debt incurred after December 10th would not be available to them. Good news is that there's an easy solution to this, that I think allows us to both avoid that problem, and that problem, by the way, would necessitate and almost certainly result in a no vote by at least one of those withdrawing towns, which we, which we can easily avoid. And so the good news is, I think, that we can both avoid that and allow ourselves a maximum amount of time to have a district-wide vote necessary, if we simply allow DESI a week or ten days to approve this agreement and then vote the debt. And I'm very encouraged by the email chain that Ed gave us before tonight's meeting, because if you read that email chain, what you see is that he gave ample notice to Christine Lynch. Christine Lynch wrote back on January 25th, saying, we reviewed the agreement and no outstanding issues. And then Ed wrote to her on the 28th and said, the new agreement is seen as important in several of our committed towns to be in effect prior to bonding. This translates to an unusual turnaround time of a week or two by the commissioner. And Christine Lynch wrote back on January 29th, the next day, and said, hi Ed, as long as there are no changes, I believe we should be able to meet this timeline. So that's the good news. Ed precisely identified the issue that brought all these selectmen here tonight, and it's one that we can easily avoid. And if you just do the math, there's kind of a Goldilocks date, right around May 11th or March 11th, or thereabouts, which this school committee, by average time, this school committee should have an approved, approved regional agreement and be able to vote the debt confident that not only will we capture all of the towns' annual town meetings, but we will not precipitate the necessity of having any of the withdrawing towns vote against it, and will still have ample time in the event that it fails to get unanimous approval to call a district-wide vote. So I would encourage this school committee to reconvene on or about May, March 10th or 11th, and to do everything possible between now and then to encourage DESI to do what Christine Lynch said they were prepared to do.
Well, my understanding is that, and Ed can say if I'm wrong or not, is that the new agreement does not go to effect in any manner until July 2017, that's what they told us, except the, to the new withdrawal.
But that, but that is the issue, Jeff.
But, but.
No, no, it's not the issue with that. That is, that is, if you read the emails, she expressly refers to that provision. That's the provision we want to be.
Well, what if there is a delay in the commissioner's approval? I mean, we know, we know that working with the state is that we're not going to hear, we're not going to be able to approach them until at least March 7th, right? Because that's when Needham's certification is going to come through. So that won't even go to the commissioner until after March 7th.
I believe, having talked to Dan Matthews, that their twenty-day period is up on March 2nd or 3rd, so should be.
But Kate told me today it was March 7th.
Okay, I'm not sure.
So I'm saying March 7th, you know, even a week or two weeks is pretty quick, which takes us to the 21st, and now our window is five weeks long.
Well, a week, it doesn't take you to the 21st, three weeks they should.
Right, so a week or two could take you to, you know.
But let's not construct obstacles. When we have, we have had DESI unnoticed, they know what the problem is, Ed put it very concisely.
Okay, so now just for argument's sake, okay, so then you'd be happy to go forward with this in two weeks, even if they didn't approve it?
No, of course not. I just said it's conditioned upon approving it. What I'm saying is that we can go down one or two paths. Down one path, we defer this vote, and we bring all of our resources to bear on DESI to say, we're all holding our breath, waiting for you to approve it, as you said you would. How about doing that? And then we reconvene and vote the debt, and I think that solves all these problems.
Well, if, if, it doesn't, and it may not, but I'm listening. Carrie.
I'm looking at the dates of the town meetings, and Lincoln is as always earliest, but even that is March 19th. So it seems to me that we could take a vote tonight and know before, well before March 19th, whether we have DESI's approval or not, whether the conditions have been met. And if necessary, we can convene another meeting, you know, and we can take another vote. But I think that we can still do it tonight with the presumption, based on all of the emails and phone calls and so forth, that they will approve it before any of the towns has to act on it.
Further discussion. Further discussion.
So I'm not an attorney, but it would seem to me we could vote it tonight, as has been mentioned, but include a provision that rescinds the vote if DESI fails to approve the, uh...
Condition.
The regional, uh, condition of approval.
I am still concerned about Jack's point about that's the old, we seem to need maybe one day long.
Can we vote if that is tomorrow?
And so because I talked to the lawyers on this, and you're right, Jack. Kevin Bresnahan sat in this room and said sixty days, sixty days, and I agree with that interpretation. Mr. Manley, who is bond counsel, a guy in charge of repaying the bondholders, has a different opinion. What I propose is exactly what you said, and that is we have an effective date. You know, this vote does not take effect until, I don't know, three, four, five days from now. And that would take care of it. Manley and Bresnahan didn't like that approach. Manley came up with this idea of using, it was initially May ninth, then we realized that Foxborough, I believe Wayland and Weston were on May ninth, so we went to May second. And I specifically asked Kevin Bresnahan, and we have our email chain to support this, and you agree with this too, and he said yes. So we had that both from Rick Manley, who's the bond counsel for at the district, and from Kevin Bresnahan, who is Ed Lennox's replacement. So they are on board with this, with the language we're employing. I hope that helps.
Uh, Mary Ellen.
So Ed, you mentioned in the beginning that you've had some correspondence with the county attorneys. Did we have copies of that?
Other than the email chain that we have, what we have here is from Rick Manley about the percentage of the vote that's required, the quant- quantitative vote.
What one's that dated?
September ninth, and this one's September second.
And we have copies of that?
They're right here, if you'd like me to look that up.
Sure.
I think that that still does not solve necessarily Jack's issue, that we're off by a day or a couple of days. So that's a still pending.
We don't just solve this issue.
Well, we make a contingent upon the approval. Yes, Alice. Except for that one section.
Except for what one section?
Um...
That they would, that they would withdraw without liability for the debt.
Uh, Section nineteen. The binding is under the existing agreement with the exception of Section nineteen, which is the one that lets them...
Define that. The, the issue is that that exemption for debt incurred after December tenth doesn't even exist until the commissioner prescinded paper and signs the agreement. And I'm afraid that there's an excellent argument that could be made, that it would not capture debt that had previously been authorized pursuant to the existing agreement. That's another problem. And the only way to avoid that is to wait to vote on the debt until he takes the big pen and signs the agreement. And from everything I see, and I believe Christine Lynch is being forthcoming here, they can do it within a week or two at the most. And it seems to me that that's where we ought to be focusing our efforts, and then vote it unequivocally after that agreement is signed.
Right, Alice.
Um, I find myself again, this is probably the second time in a number of decades of service on this committee, where sixteen members of the committee have made it to this meeting to take an important vote, and at the eleven-hour sixty minutes, maybe fifty-nine minutes, fifty-nine seconds, we find out, and without anything in writing to read about the issue, and asked to take it in just auditorily, without having anything to read about the argument, that we have to change what we're doing and come into a special meeting again. And I'm very irritated.
In all fairness, we understood, at least the issue of the sixty days is one we've been struggling with for a while. So that's not a new issue. The new wrinkle here is whether this, if putting the date explicitly in there solves the problem, is a disagreement on that, and that's a possible...
I totally understand the wrinkle. I'm just not happy with the finer.
Well, I'd like to respond to that.
Wait a second, Ford.
Go ahead.
Thank you, because, you know, Alice, I have to believe that you think I'm lying in this particular bit of laundry. And I just wanna say that I didn't wait until seven fifteen tonight to inquire about this. I called Ford, I had a conversation with him, I called Dan Matthews, I sent an email to Jeff. I asked Jeff to call me last week. And I got an email back that had five words in it. "It is being worked on." So I did what I could to put this in front of this committee last week. The fact that it didn't get heard by you until a few minutes ago is not my fault.
Uh, Ford?
I guess I'm having a little trouble. What is the problem of calling a meeting on the fifteenth, and we're all here, so we disagree that we're gonna be here on the fifteenth to do this one?
When is the date of our next schedule?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second.
Why can't we come here on the fifteenth? I mean, can everybody?
And if it ends up being that, we can, okay?
I just picked that date.
Right, I understand that. I'm just being devil's advocate here, you understand? I haven't expressed an opinion yet, okay? So the problem once again is, there's, um... If the commissioner does not act, if that's what, there are two different concerns here. One of which I feel as strongly as Jack does. The other one I'm not so strong at is there's another way around it. So if we are deciding this based on when the commissioner acts, maybe he'll go on vacation. I'm saying, you can say that there's not an issue, but then we come back here again, we find there's another issue. Now, remember, if you remember, Vince, when we started this process up again, I said, "I'm all happy with moving ahead with it as long as we're done with it by such and such a date," because I'm very concerned about the money for the project, and then we have, so how many months has it been since then now? Since the date that I said this is by, you know, I want everything wrapped up, I did. It's been a long time, so please let me finish. Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at the clock. I'm looking at the consequences of the delay. It doesn't mean I don't agree with you. But I have to state the opinion that as time goes by, and as we get more worried about those contingencies, we're not gonna be happy later on when we find that our money is gonna buy less and less, and that our window of opportunity to put together a possible vote is going shorter and shorter too. So that's the, that's the only reason. Now, if I knew for a hundred percent sure that the commissioner was gonna act within two weeks, that's fine. But what happens if we come back two weeks from now, which I have no objection to, and we find that the, well, we're gonna wait till they, that he went on vacation, but we're gonna wait another, in other words, are we gonna keep letting it creep out because it isn't acting? Or is there a point where we're gonna say, "We have to take the risk and move forward on it"? So now, to me, the reasons to delay, I have two reasons, one of which I'm very concerned about, so I have no problem with a little bit of delay here. But I have a little problem if the deadline is gonna keep creeping because of lack of action by the state. So that's just my opinion. Dave and Jermaine.
Wouldn't Needham vote on the regional payment and approval?
I don't recall the date. It doesn't matter if, if, if the town manager says it's March seventh, then it's March seventh. Whatever, whatever the town manager says, I have to believe. Sharon and Jennifer. Jennifer. Jennifer is ready to... Oh, wait, wait. Dave was not finished, so we're gonna go to Jennifer. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. This is the closest that I've ever seen this body come to a decision. And putting up this resistance to establishing a date for all factors I know, and everybody will be working honestly and with goodwill, I don't understand why we can't do that. The assurances are there that you're gonna have ten towns that are gonna vote for this funding. And I, all along, I've been wondering why you want the six towns that are leading to even be involved in this vote, okay? But I think the six towns need some assurance, which is the approval of the agreement, that they're not gonna get stuck put on the hook, as the superintendent used for Wayland, for this debt. And then you would have everybody in concert. You would have everybody working together, and God bless the selectmen, they brought us a hundred miles in about sixty days that we had not done anything in three years. So the delay is, is fair, and it'll be fair for everybody. And you'll get your new school, and you'll get your funding, and you'll be off and running. And we'll be off and running. We'll all be... I make deals, okay? That's, that's where I make my money, making deals. And you have to have people at the table that wanna make the deal. And I, I don't see the administration, I don't see the opposition blindly to make the deal.
Jennifer.
I don't like the idea of the delay, but my worry is if we don't wait until the approval of by DESI, by the commissioner, Foxborough's gonna disallow the debt and we're done. I mean, we're gonna go to sixteen M. I mean, I think, or one of these six towns that doesn't have a guarantee that they aren't going to be on the hook for the debt is going to put it on their agenda, on their town meeting agenda, and disallow it.
Let me paint a slightly different scenario. Let's say that, just for presumption's sake, that Jack's concern is not mutual, only focusing on this one, just as an example. Let's say we revoke today for the sixty-day window. And a month goes by, which is still before town meeting, right? Because they have until sixty days. March nineteenth.
Lexington on the twenty-first.
Right, but what do you think would really be the...
And Lexington, the twenty-first. So we have to vote.
Well...
That's the point I was making before.
Yeah.
We could take a vote for the second or the ninth, but we have to have their feedback.
So, but just so that membership can understand, later, when we look up the money it's gonna take to do this project, and what else we're gonna have to throw in on it, we may not be so happy with the decisions we've taken in the last few months. So since that's not a number we can see now, because it just depends on things that are gonna happen in the future, we don't see it. But that number could be very large.
Thank you. I am very sensitive to that concern for the number. I totally understand that. However, you know, I didn't respond when Mr. Wise here asked for towns that had voted to withdraw to speak, because, as I think you all know, I'm very unhappy that we withdrew, and I didn't wanna say anything that I would regret saying. However, I have to respect the fact that Lincoln did vote to withdraw, and I have to agree with Vince that it doesn't seem responsible to vote on this issue until we have heard back from the commissioner.
So let me ask a question to the members of the school committee. Just keep this in the back of your mind. Do we have any idea what the cost of putting together the initial wide vote would be, the ballpark?
Two hundred thousand or something?
Two hundred thousand dollars. Let me ask you about this scenario, who we take this from.
Less than.
Less than, like one hundred thousand? Sixty or seventy. Let's say it's seventy-five thousand dollars. Let me paint the scenario for you. And again, I'm not saying which way I'm voting, I just wanna bring the contingencies up in front of you. Let's say that as this time drags on, and we do eventually have to go to a district-wide vote, which is a possibility. And let's say that because of the shrinkage of the window, even before we know whether we're gonna have to go with a district-wide vote, in order to keep that window open, we have to pay out the full seventy-five thousand dollars to keep our opportunity open, which is a possibility, as the window gets smaller. Would that be okay to you? Because as the window gets smaller, we won't have to have enough time after whatever's gonna happen to, to plan and to do all the work needed for the district-wide vote. We're gonna have to do a lot of it ahead of time, which means you'd have to pay the money ahead of time. So that would be your strategy. Your strategy would be say, "Okay, we don't worry about the window closing a little bit, but we keep in the back of our mind that we may have to, in order to keep that opportunity open, spend money ahead of time that we won't use because all the member communities are gonna vote yes." Now, to me, that's a very easy question to answer, but some of you may feel a little bit differently. That, to me, is another one of the negatives for, again, I'm not saying which way I vote on this, another one of the things in the negative category for people like you.
I, I confess that I have to blend, but I'd like to see someone that after the vote that takes into what this is saying and what, what Jack is saying.
Emotion.
Yeah, emotion about when we take the vote. If someone craft emotion that, literally craft emotion.
As, as a practical matter, we just, we just postpone the meeting for two weeks. We just have a special meeting in two weeks, and if that's not good enough, we reschedule a special meeting again, so we don't need any fancy votes.
Well, let me just say further, 'cause I'm agreeing with what people are saying about the need to have the DSC signature on the paper to put it there comfortable with knowing that, that the provision of the original agreement applies to them. And also, not, we're not worried whether or not, like we mentioned, the sixty-day deadline by a couple of days really can throw things, arrange them under. So I'm, I'm in favor of whatever it takes, either a motion or just a simple motion about postponing the vote to do it.
We would just hale the vote, call a special meeting, you know, and I think it wouldn't make any sense to do it in less than two weeks. And if that's not enough, we'd have to reevaluate the situation, then we could go to our regular meeting. But then, as time goes on, these other issues arise. So first, we, people wanna talk, so first Ben, then Alice, and then we're gonna walk over to Weston.
Okay, if we postpone this meeting, this vote for two weeks, is the sixty days in stone? Can we still say March, uh, May second deadline? Can we make it less than sixty days?
No.
No, it has to be sixty days, so you still...
Yeah, it's sixty days. That's why we're... Uh, Alice?
So we have to print and proof, uh, well, proof layout, then for, then for a hundred and eighty thousand pounds for the sixteen communities to do the sixteen M?
Right.
And so when would you have to start that process in order to do the sixteen M?
We would have to, we'd have to spend that money.
Right, so would we need to be a second vote in addition to this vote here? We'd have to take another vote, probably. It would have to be some more compliance of the community to discover where it was seventy-five thousand dollars or whatever the figure is.
That is all correct. That's correct.
That would also have to occur, because you would have to essentially do all this valid work in anticipation of having to use them, even if they weren't essentially going to be used, because you wouldn't have it until January, also, to post, to post the election.
What you have to do is you have to basically communicate with the election office of sixteen towns, all of which have different regulations and all of which have different contracts. You have to coordinate all of those, you have to pay upfront for the costs of making the ballots. You have to...
Different ballots.
Different ballots. You have, that's why we have, that's why the figure's in the range of seventy-five thousand dollars or more. So that's an expense, that's why I bring the issue up. You're gonna have to start that process. And it's okay with me, but we have to understand we're gonna discuss this, all the pros and all the cons, and that's one of the things.
I'm prepared to make a favorable motion, so go ahead, let Jack.
Hey, Jack.
One comment and then a question. First, the comment is, I had to mention it before, but I do think we need to, as a group, remember what I viewed as basically a commitment to the selectmen and the town representatives when they were here for that group practice, that we would go through the town meeting process according to the normal...
process according to the normal spring schedule. So I think there's risk if we vote tonight on this that we will not be true to that. The other question, this is a more question. Jeff, you made an assertion that except for the six towns who wanted to leave, we would need the, under the old agreements, until July seventeen. I know that there's language here that says the communities who are leaving can't leave until July seventeen, but our town council believes that the new agreement is effective when Dessa approves it. There's no language here that's...
That's not true. The state has, to my surprise, the state has told us, they gave it to their lawyers, Chris, whatever his name is. He said that no provisions of the new agreement are in effect until July two thousand seventeen, except for, exception of, this is what he wrote pretty clearly, section ninety, where the towns have agreed that withdrawing members would not be obligated for any debt increase by the district after December tenth, two thousand fifteen.
What, one didn't think that this was an important piece of information to share with our towns before we took the vote on the amended...
We got that information today.
Wow, so good.
Because that's, well, it's, first of all, it's not so late, because we communicated with them right after the vote occurred, and this is the fastest they got back. We got one legal opinion from our lawyer that said one thing, and then we checked with the state, and the state said something else. So we were about to move ahead with the understanding that we were going to be working under the new agreement in all respects, based on a legal opinion by our lawyer, and we figured that out was true, was today, was today, yesterday.
That is contrary to what I shared with our town on our...
I agree with that, yeah.
Can you share that written information with us, so that those of us who think it's an issue in our town can share that with our respective town council?
The issue is presented...
It is, that's, that's part of what's at the table?
Yes. Thank you. So, big surprise, I was, I was, I was writing a, I was helping, I was designing an iPad voting app for us, and all of this, because I figured we have to do this in March.
I already have one.
How wonderful. Not looking back. Alice.
What is the date that people are proposing it should be? Do you think that the last date occurs in this motion here? Now, it says May second, what is the date that the...
It'll be two weeks from tonight.
Two weeks. It'd be sixty days, or whatever. No, 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 I want to know the dates of some of the people who are very, very excited about the date. It wouldn't have a date, it doesn't need one, because it's sixty days, and that would be drawn to all of the, and that's how they...
Sixty days from when we take the vote, within two weeks would trivially encompass the time.
That date will be there, accommodate the fact that we're not in there yet.
Dave Horn.
I always thought that the new agreement would take place July first, two thousand seventeen, after I was telling my...
Well, I guess we all should have listened to you. This is often a good thing to do. It really doesn't make any difference. It does for running the school.
I, yeah, I understand that the focus of discussion right now is on the rising bonding, and when who needs meet, and all of that, but if that date is really July first, two thousand seventeen, we need to look at how we're going to deal with that, and planning and calculations and assessments, and all of that stuff as well, because those will be calculated in advance of that site, of that date, and implemented after that date. So that's, so I haven't, I haven't read it, but I think we need to know now, so, but I would, if we're considering a vote on the fifteenth, I would very much appreciate having love for round the table who's available that night.
Well, unfortunately, it could, it would be either the fifteenth or our normal meeting date.
The fifteenth, I think.
Well, if, now, again, we don't know if the commissioner's going to act.
Do we need a motion?
Who would need a motion?
I'll make a motion, then we have our next meeting on the fifteenth.
Move to twenty second meeting, please.
Move to twenty second.
Yep.
Exactly. How many of you can attend a meeting on the fifteenth?
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Just don't make it to seventeen.
You cannot?
Okay, I'm out of the country.
Right, let me see the hands. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Good thing without overweighted voting on that.
Right, okay, well, let me ask a question to you, Vince. Right now, I think, on that date, there may be not enough votes to move forward with this from just the, we may not have a quorum without the people from the districts the towns are leaving. It's possible, so you all have to stay around and support the vote at that time.
On the fifteenth.
On the fifteenth.
So to address your question, me, I had always intended to vote for it, provided it's incurred pursuant to the...
Okay, so let me, before you say anything, let me just wrap this up again. And I want to bring again out, and I'm going to vote for this, by the way, but I want to bring out the negatives again, just so that when we move forward, there won't be any unpleasant surprises. First negative, as we continue delays, the money that we're putting into this project is going to be worth less, and we're either going to have to cut things which we can't cut, or ultimately put more money into the project on our own, which is not going to be safe. The other thing is, as our window gets smaller, it's going to be harder to, if we need to, to take a district wide vote in that window. Finally, as our window gets smaller and later, we may have to spend money that we don't want to spend for a vote that we may not be taking. So as long as everybody understands that, it's been, it's been said, then I'm all in favor of changing the date to the fifteenth for this. So, we don't really need a motion to change our meeting date.
I'm not giving you a motion, I'm just asking your time, what time on the fifteenth?
Um, six thirty. Is that, will be our regular meeting now, so six thirty.
So then I will move to table this motion until the fifteenth.
Discussion on the motion to table only.
I have just a brief comment. We have sixteen folks here, and there are two priorities. There's the priorities of those towns that are departing, that have voted to depart, and there are the priorities of the remaining towns. They're very different priorities, but they are dependent upon the same person acting, and that is the commissioner. And the commissioner cannot act until all certified votes are in hand. I'd ask that the school committee members check with Liz about who has submitted those to us, who has not, and expedite those things tomorrow. Unfortunately, this issue in Needham was not foreseen, otherwise we probably have approval now, the twenty days to certify a vote. So I would ask you to move forward and get those votes to us as soon as possible.
Mary Ellen.
So on that same topic, Ed, would you please tell folks who are they supposed to send that certified letter to?
To Liz.
Liz, because Oz was sent to Jeff, and evidently it wasn't received, and we did not go back to our town either.
Send it.
Jeff, send it to the representative, who said...
Yeah. That's, that's a hold on. Okay, so there is a motion to the table, it's only on the discussion motion at the table. Yes, Alice.
Why the fifteenth, they're not going to, this is...
Because if Needham's letter doesn't come through the seventh, and the commissioner has, there's zero chance, almost zero chance left by the night, we're giving him a week to act. We're giving him a week to act.
Twenty days.
Twenty days to the commissioner. Nothing is, this comes under the category of nothing is easy. Any other discussion of motion at the table? Bring it to vote, all in favor of the motion at the table. Passes grudgingly unanimously, thank you very much. Oh, an abstention? It's a one, two, I'm not going to count it, it's like one, two, three, four, five, six, yeah, we're all here. So fifteen in favor, one abstention. Ready?
Four, you're open. The email that was delivered today, that's printed here, could you forward that electronically? So just would help expedite...
Liz can feed you up.
That would be great, yeah, just it would help us be able to forward it to others within our community.
Would you rather do that one, or first?
The March first, the March first email from Chris Lynch that talks about none of the provisions of the regional agreement being effective until July the seventeenth.
Send it.
We have it already?
We have it.
Would you like to pay more?
Yes, Mr. Ball, I'm so sorry, please, shh.
On January twenty seventh, we met with the board of MSBA, as you, if you all know, you're in the papers or anywhere else, we got a rule to move to by June. Five, which is what we're, a process we're going through with town meetings, so I will tell you that the, what you do is you do it in bulk, there are a whole lot of communities who are all there, and they take you in whatever module you're going to. The one district they talked about and praised was Nedman, and the treasurer of the Commonwealth did that, and she was really quite motley about Nedman and what we've been doing on the building project, and the type of school we are, and who we are, and I think that's what you really need to know, is we are highly thought of, care about the state, and in most The second subject, we have to vote to name Kevin Mahoney as our MCPO, he's been certified for that, the building committee needs world, John Law has served that, we are grateful for his service on that, but we need to have a motion to appoint Kevin Mahoney. It's their second. Any discussion?
All in favor of motion at table? Let's see now, that is, let's see, so that's fifteen in favor, nays, non abstentions, or...
We need to appoint, because we've had the principal on before, we need to officially do it, appoint Jack Dillon as a building member, under place, or do you who will?
Still move.
Does Jack Dillon want it?
I'd be honored to.
Notice we didn't, didn't ask Kevin Mahoney. And for the discussion, I would motion everyone else. All in favor of motion, table raise your hands. That is fifteen in favor, and one member is walking out, so I assume that she's, are you voting, oh, you're, are you voting on this issue?
No.
No? So I'm going to conduct two abstentions, and fourteen in favor.
Yeah, I'd like to say it would be very nice to have at least of the ten communities they're in, every have a representative of the building committee from those communities. We have some communities who have people on the building committee who don't show up, and I think those people think they're appointed. Well, they were appointed by their selectmen in this committee, but we've never heard from their selectmen taking them off the committee, number one, and in some cases, they haven't reappointed somebody. I think in some cases, especially with the voting procedure we might have, it'd be very important to have those communities on the table.
Can you forward a list?
Yeah.
What do you think of the active members?
Um, well, I, yes, we could, Liz, would you please forward a list of those people, which are going to see some people on there that the communities had, but they haven't taken them off, so...
And I see who's on there, if anybody for my best, or I can go and figure out where the...
So Liz will set that up. We need to update our CM at risk process, Kevin Mahoney is going to do that, construction manager, manager at risk, what we do, we're going to do is after the communities all vote for the buildings, which they're going to do, we then will be going out to hire a construction manager to work with us during the process of doing the design drawings, as well as going out for build, et cetera, and when you do that, you have cooperation.
Do we require a voter in sort for that?
No.
No?
No, Mr. Chairman, it's a vote of the school building committee that develops that process, and we submit an application, we submit it to the inspector general, notifying them of our intention. That application can be submitted because I'm told it's a four to six week...
Great, thank you very much. And is that the end of your report?
That's the end of my report.
Thank you for...
Oh, no, it isn't.
Oh, no, it's not.
We are putting together a presentation, the building committee is working with the administration to do that, and we're going to have a presentation which we can use in all towns. We would hopefully have that done within a couple of weeks at least, hopefully shorter, that we can work with, and we're looking forward to having all the members of the school committee and the building committee being involved with the passage of this within their towns, and in active participation. So you'll be receiving the material, our next meeting of the building committee is next, fourteen, two weeks from yesterday. You're all invited, especially the ten towns of the willing, to come and be a part of that process, so you can be familiar with it, so you can be talking, making presentations in your towns. If the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and our director of communications and myself are unable to attend, but we will try to attend as many of the meetings as we can, we understand, it's not only a town meeting process, we're going to need to meet with finance committees, we need with capital budget committees, or whoever else the town wants to do. We have a very short window to get that done, it really is going to have to be done in March and April, so you need to be, these meetings need to be set up, you need to contact Liz, or Ed, or Albert, we're going to do it, so you can sign up. I notice my name gets signed up sometimes, and I don't mind that, but I need to know in my schedule what I can do with these things.
Carrie, and then Jennifer.
I just wanted to say that the town conference finance committee has already voted to recommend affirmative action on the building article, despite knowing that there are many question marks that will be answered before town meeting. Their question to me was not, you know, their question to me was, what's the public education process, what are we going through, how do we get beyond the finance committee meeting? So you've already sort of partially answered that, but, so I will be looking now with Carmen and Frank, who are the two Concord representatives on the building committee, to schedule some kind of a public forum in Concord as we move forward.
The more meetings we can schedule, the better, and I would say you ought to start doing them now.
Jennifer.
I actually spoke to my finance director today, and she asked me once again the process for debt exclusion of this, and I, we need to know what that's going to be, and how that's going to work fairly soon, so that we can start educating people on that process as well. We all know, more people understand the vote, the better off we are.
Alice.
I just wanted to say that my capital planning committee, which was in Fort Dunstow, was about just to come, meet with them on the fourth, and they've been interested in this project for a number of years, the actual previous member of the capital planning committee chair passed away during this building project effort, so I used to communicate with a different person who passed away, now I communicate with the new guy, and I've been communicating with him for a few years, and he asked us to come meet with the capital planning committee in the late March, and I also wanted to thank Harry for remarking on the educational aspects and importance, and not just focusing only on the regional agreement.
Jen.
To address the issue that Jen proposed, taking dueling law, legal opinions with the grand assault, but the way it has been explained to me on repeated occasions, and the premise that I am operating on...
that I am operating under, and I would, I guess respectfully, request either confirmation or affirmation or something of this, is that each town will be obligated for the debt if the debt passes. If the individual town chooses to hold a debt exclusion vote, all the power to them, but if that debt exclusion vote fails, and the debt was approved, the debt is still approved regardless of the exclusion.
My understanding is that there is a difference of opinion on that, and we need to get that resolved.
That's a big thing for us, I think, that the other question was, because of the way the vote of Mahoney is voted, you vote the entire hundred and forty-four million?
We don't vote any, no.
So you just vote both?
At the, at the Dallas, you're not voting any.
Right. But when we vote as a town at a town meeting, we're both approving the entire bar, we obviously, that is not what our debt exclusion is going to be, so it's that process. So I guess that why is the finance director is not sure about.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have a comment?
Well, my understanding is, and Steve's been in contact with the attorneys, is that under sixteen P, the exclusion has to occur within the sixty days. If the exclusion does not occur within the sixty days, it's considered approval by non- disapproval. Under sixteen N, if the aggregate vote approves, in a district-wide ballot, if the aggregate vote approves the project, the project is approved, not contingent upon any action in regards to debt exclusion by any individual town that has passed the agreement. Generally, that's right. It all depends on the timing of the debt exclusion vote. It's better to occur, if it's a failure, it's better to occur within the sixty days.
Which, in order to give that community the opportunity in its town meeting to vote it down, because the debt exclusion vote by itself would not necessarily, the town would still have to vote against the debt. The debt exclusion does not substitute for town meeting.
That's.
Carrie.
That, at least, some people are suggesting that if the vote at town meeting is contingent upon passage of the debt exclusion, and the debt exclusion fails, that turns the town meeting vote into a no. And more interesting question is, if the debt exclusion vote happens after town meeting and passes in my town, you know, so they've got a yes vote at town meeting, and a yes vote at the debt exclusion, and some other town votes no, and we go to the election, does the debt exclusion still apply to the vote which has, to the debt which has now been incurred as a result of the ballot vote? Or do you have to come back and do another ballot vote? And I don't know how to resolve that in the language that's allowed. So, yeah, it gets really sticky.
Right.
And we've got to wish we did this two years ago.
About six years ago.
Right.
Assistant Superintendent, report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I was in the committee, there are item A, there are four donations, I'm asking that you accept them. One is the two thousand and two, the first one, and another is miscellaneous funding items, there is for capentry tools, and the fourth is for real line system, the form and the back.
Would you like a single vote to approve all four of those items?
I would accept.
No. Discussion. All in favor of the motion to the table? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, next item is an update on the FY seventeen budget. After our public hearing, the governor issued the FY seventeen state budget, which included the funding for chapter seventy-eight, as well as the minimum required contributions that each town needs to contribute to its funding in school districts. So when we looked at the chapter seventy-eight that we received versus what we budgeted, it was only a difference of about one thousand nine hundred and five dollars. The regional school transportation was less by about twenty thousand oh sixty-five, but that's an estimate, I'm a little concerned about that. However, the major issue that required is a recertification, is because the minimum required contributions are part of the chapter seventy, formula, and part of the state budget, so the minimum required contribution by town gets to be reassessed. So it's offset by the assessments that are over the minimum contribution, it's all included on the revenue plan, and on the assessment sheet. The net effect is that the assessments will go up one thousand nine hundred and five dollars, and basically, it looks like there were three communities that ended up increasing as a result of the state budget, the rest of the decrease. So I'm asking that the committee vote to recertify the budget of nineteen million seven hundred twenty-eight thousand oh ninety-seven, and the required number assessments of ten million nine hundred forty-three thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars.
And who's the community that went up the vote? And by how much?
Yeah, sure, it was Acton, and just rounding approximately fifteen thousand dollars, and only two sixty-three thousand dollars in Stone, about thousand dollars.
Discussion on the motion to the table?
Just for information, I did distribute to all town managers and town administrators for budget planning purposes, and the finance committee reviewed this as well.
All in favor of the motion to the table? That would be fourteen in favor, nays, and abstentions one.
One person has been.
That's why I did fourteen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Subcommittee's report, Superintendent of Evaluation Subcommittee, Dave Horton.
If you go through your packet, you see a section that says, so if your reports follow the presentation by Kevin, and what it said is, and all the material, all the material that follows that introductory page, except for the actual formative evaluation itself, that is Ed's progress report, so the progress report, like three eight seven eight. So to let you know that we will be, this is, we are doing a formative evaluation, the school committee is being asked to do a formative evaluation, which is consistent with the evaluation process established by E D S E. And the four, if you look in your packet, the superintendent, the four goals that we voted on from the superintendent, they are the first, the first four pages. And then, so then, then following those pages are Ed's progress report. We will then, we will then are asked to, and I think you got a email from Liz today or yesterday, I think it is, that you'll be doing the, your evaluation on survey margins, and it will be open as of today through midnight, March fifteenth. And after, and once all of those, all the evaluations are submitted, then our, the subcommittee, David Carter, Jennifer, and I will get together and review them, and we're not going to make any, I imagine we will not make any suggestion about this or that, just like we did, remember, last year, each, when we did the summative evaluation, end of the year, I was superintendent, last year, how we voted, and the comments that we made, that each person made, if they made any, were listed, school committee member by school committee member, for each goal, and that's what I believe that would be our aim this time, at this time it will be four goals. So do get a copy of that, of that report after we leave. As I say, we are not going to do any averaging or this or that, just, you'll just get a list of each person's rating, have they rated on target, off target, and not started, since it's a formative evaluation. And then that will be submitted at a public meeting, and then later in the year, later this year, at the main meeting, we'll start the summative evaluation process, and make our recommendations.
Dave, if you could go further, could you just briefly mention the difference between the formative and the summative evaluation purposes?
Formative is on your way, it's an evaluation, but it's not the final evaluation, it's like, if you were teaching a class, a teacher might do a quiz, like the, for a teacher, would be a formative evaluation, it's part of the process leading to a final evaluation. So this is also true of teachers in the schools, and right now, I work with, I work with student teachers for Simmons College, and they're following the same process that teachers are following in their schools, and we are right in the middle of doing formative evaluations, which are mid-cycles evaluation, as Byrd always said, this is a mid, we're not exactly mid-cycle, but it's, if we get our mainstream out of the way, we'll be sort of mid-cycle, but it's called a mid-cycle progress report. The summative is the end of the cycle report, the year-end, it sums up all the, evaluates all the progress that a person has made during the year. Is that a difference?
Could I? Evaluation theory?
I'm sorry?
I said in evaluation theory, I'm just adding. A formative evaluation is there to inform progress in the middle of whatever we're talking about.
That's a good way, that's a good point to make. Right, because that's what we're doing, say, with our student teachers, we're going to sit down with them and say, here's how we see you at this point, and here's, these are the things we think you need to work on, very good point. You're doing well, and here's what you'd like you to do more in this area, or if there's progress in that, that's a good point, thank you. Just to mention that the, that the comments section on the form, the forms of the pages are expandable, like they always have been, and I think I've mentioned the other points, but we're being reviewed by the committee, and the school committee will get a copy of everyone's evaluation, and from that, we'll be able to make recommendations. That's a very good point. Any questions? Yes.
Just those four questions?
Four goals, yes.
Four goals, and then you have four choices, or three choices?
And comments. Since this is.
Takes about two seconds.
You've spoken a lot of thought into it.
I did, I put a lot of thought, I know what's going on.
Good man. Okay, anything else? Molly is up after four.
Thank you so much, Dave, for again taking on this, who's on the subcommittee?
Jennifer and Dave.
Thank you so much for doing this, Ray, and now they've gotten working a lot, a lot easier now.
Yeah, in fact, Mary Anne, too, was setting up survey, and other aspects of it, too.
Okay, so thank you for getting this working smoothly, much easier now than it was a few years ago.
Oh, much easier, yeah.
And that's your effort, and we have.
Well, all right.
Now, wait a second now, as a, being a school teacher, I know how much goes, believe me, I've been on the scene.
And he's been the subject of.
And I'm doing, and I'm trying to be more.
Well, but you're, but you're on, Ken, you can do the hero again. Approval of minutes, Dave Horton.
I think that the, of January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, you approved that present.
Second.
Any other discussion, yes, any discussion?
I apologize for not sending this to you, I nearly melted when I read it on my iPad, and then forgot to follow up when I saw it in the packet. This is on the page in the, and, oh, item five, like four, on the second page, or five, I guess? That can't be, no, okay, thanks. It's on the regional agreement stuff, isn't it? Find action number two thousand and sixteen, number five. Number seven, I'm going to turn the page over, here. It's where a member of the board of selectmen, under board of selectmen, offered to, and I'll give you that quote, create a spreadsheet that would calculate net present value of the project under varying conditions, nothing to do with the other projects.
So what are you recommending is a change?
When we find the right section.
I've got it.
It's, it, right now, it says he offered to compare past five recent technical school projects. It should be, create this spreadsheet that would calculate net present value of the project under varying conditions.
And are you, do we need to formally move that, or is that just a technical correction?
Technical.
Technical correction, very good, so we still have this motion to the table. Any further discussions? All in favor of the motion to the table, two proven minutes, let's see who is here, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, a nays, none, abstentions, and should be thirteen and two.
Thirteen, two, and two.
Great.
I have a question.
Do I have a second? So just to remind you, we'll be back here in two weeks. If you don't have the superintendent, the commissioner's approval, you may go back to three weeks, and after that, you'll have to make a hard decision, we still don't have a regular meeting, unless we still don't have a committee down in that, thank you very much.
Personally, I guess I can get some hours more, but I have a little bit.
How you doing?